I'd like to welcome everyone to Bryan City Council Meeting for Monday, June 1st, 2015. First on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Gentlemen, you have the copies there. What's your wishes?
I don't see any necessary changes, so I'll make our motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Tommy?
Yes?
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Number two on the agenda is hearing of public concerns. I know there are some people out here that want to express some concerns tonight, so if each of you who want to talk, if you would please come to the microphone here and state your name and give us what's on your mind. So Margot, do you want to start out or some of that?
Mr. Mayor and councilmember, there are a few of us neighbors. We are here from Leglita Court, and we have some concerns with our street and some of the problems that we're having on the street. So each one of us has something to address, and we really have some problems that we need to get them taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Nikki Sammons. I'm a resident on Leglita Court. About a month ago, I did run into some sewer problems down that street. I did see where there is allocated money for our street now to repair that. We're just trying to get the urgency to get it done sooner than later before more problems arise. I know in my particular home, it's happened at least twice with the homeowners down that street. There's a couple of people that couldn't be here tonight that have had several issues with sewer problems down that street as well. We actually had a gentleman that couldn't be here that his bathroom is a mess after that line was jetted.
Everything's backing up.
Mm-hmm. My concern is, you know, I know the city personally with my claim, you know, are not liable for some of the damages, but it's just to me coincidental when we know right off the hand that there's five or six people having the same problems. You know, I'm okay with taking care of my responsibility, but I would wish the city would maybe move this along faster. I don't know how the process takes and how long it takes, but I do want to stress urgency, not for me, but just my family.
Can you be a little more specific? I mean, we're hearing there's a problem. We know it's a sewer, but can you be a little more specific?
Um, basically, it started in December. We were getting a sewer smell. The city came over several times, and they were very honorable and trying to help. We couldn't find the root of the problem, and I got a guy to come out, plumber if you will. Long story short, it was plugged at the end of my line where the washout is to the main, I guess, pipe if you will. And with that, but finding that out before that, I had about five to six inches of sewer in my basement. Yeah, not good when you have little ones, let alone ourselves. I know in my situation, like I said, we've got it cleaned up, but it's a mess, you know? And I guess the homeowner previous to me had the same sewer backup, and the city took care of them 100 percent. And in my case, it's not about the money. I just would like it to be resolved before I have more problems because, you know, entailed with backing up is not so much taking care of it, but it can do constructional damage over years, and that's something I don't want it to get to.
Is it sanitary you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
So sewage from your toilet?
Yes.
Is that?
Yes.
You don't know if it's a collection of roots or smashed?
When they augured it and encamered it, it was, there's no other damage. It was a pure clog from that little, you know what I mean, from our washout, which is by the end of the road to the main line. And then from the neighbors speaking, once they fixed my problem, the city was out there and they jetted that line down the street, which blew a gentleman's water back into his bathroom the same time that happened, and he's fighting with the city at the moment to explain his concern.
Now, was that in the basement bathroom or?
Mine was in the basement. This gentleman was in the bathroom. I don't know how his plumbing is, so I'm not here to speak, but I just know of that happened. Mine was in my basement.
His is on his main floor.
Pardon me?
His would be on his main floor.
His main floor, so. Like I said, just just a concern because of the history that I noticed there. I do know that there, and I'm not here to do hearsay, but I do know that it's been a common denominator that that pipe has needed to be redone for quite a few years now.
Nikki, you stated that you talked to the city, and you're saying that something is going to be done?
Well.
Because I mean, I mean, I guess, I'm not aware of anything out of Leglita Court that we're going to go in there and make separations and put new sewer lines and things like that. So I guess, did you get that information from city workers?
The Bryan Times. Said that there was, was an allocation.
$383,000, I think.
Right, for Leglita Court. So I assumed that was what that was going to be.
Lori, is that in there?
I believe it was in the minutes from a prior meeting that, yes, they are planning to.
When was the meeting?
Do a project. I can't tell you what meeting it was in there.
Okay.
Probably within the last two months, though.
But it's in this budget?
Yeah, it's in the budget, and I think they're planning on launching that project fairly soon. I haven't seen the project books yet from engineering, but knowing they normally do the sewer projects over the summer when there's less rains.
Right.
They can do it. I would assume it's in the summer.
Okay.
But I'm definitely.
Right, of course, of course.
Then I guess I missed that because I don't remember.
And when we seen that, of course, our urgency is like, okay, great, you know, but I know that can take time, and like I said, I just don't want it to come back as a constructional problem because, like I said, you are talking basements, you're talking structures, and let alone sewer.
Right.
You know what I mean? It's not like it's water.
You separated your sewer and your water.
Mm-hmm.
You did that separation, so it definitely would be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's my concern because I just went through this a month ago, and it was not something I wish upon anybody.
We don't wish it upon you.
Now, this last storm, did you have any problems?
No, I did not. I did not personally, but once again, we have two neighbors that did. So it's an ongoing thing, and I just think it's ironic that it keeps happening all down our street.
It's definitely a problem.
Yes, so thank you guys.
I wish Brian Wheelam was here, our engineer.
And that's who I spoke with. Brian handled it at the beginning, and then I dealt with Tyson and Brad Cox, who I hired to do that job at the end of the drive.
So if we go back to Brian, he's going to know, he's going to know the situation.
We'll get back to Brian, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Margot, you have something?
I apologize. Brian's usually here or representative, and I probably should have contacted the mayor when you called him.
We'd have him here, yes.
And see if we could have him, but I just assumed he was going to be here tonight. But with him knowing that situation, it will definitely get passed on, so you can come on up. Okay. Thank you, Nikki.
I'll continue this. Just to back up, Nikki, basically, I think it was in January, we had severe sewer smell. We live right next door to each other on Leglita Court, and it seems to be our side of the street that's having a problem.
That'd be the east side, yes.
We have, yeah, on the, yes, on the east side. And anyway, we had severe sewer smell, and we back and forth, and we had to, the city was down to our house four different times from January till even now. And right now, I've got, I've got flags in my yard. They're planning to dig up my driveway and to put my wastewater, you know, the sump pump thing.
Oh, yeah.
We had a real problem with that this last winter. It just completely flooded both of our driveways because our driveways are right together. Flooded both of our driveways, froze over. My husband went out to get in the car a couple of times to take me to work and fell, and so I contacted a gentleman from the city, and they came right down and put a big eight-inch rubber thing that's running that water out to the street, and it's still there. So I was told Friday that they're going to come and dig underneath and bury that. But the problem is, is we have some real problems. We got water, water out in front of our house sitting. It's going in our basement underneath the foundation, coming up through the basement. We have a real water problem there, whether it's the sewer. We have no wastewater line out in front of our house to even put a tap on to even get that water flowing. And it sits out, it seems like it sits out. I don't know if the street's all coming, like maybe the first four or five houses there, but it sits out in our gutters, and it just stays there. It doesn't get down to the little grates to go into.
So now we're talking rainwater now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Rainwater.
Rainwater. But, and then when, like she said, when they came down with the jetter and jetted it, it shook our whole house. My husband was home, and when they ran that jetter through, it shook our whole house, you know? And that's when Mr. Eckler, which lives down the street, that's when it backed up into his bathroom and completely tore the tie away, shook it enough that it brought his shower curtain down and that, and this. And he, he gave me this letter. He was unable to be here this evening, but he just received a letter from the city saying that they weren't responsible for any damage that was done at that particular time. So we're fighting with that. But we really do have a water problem, and we really need it addressed, and I'm going to let Mr. Taylor come up and talk to you about the property right across the street, 110 Leglita Court, and that's a real, real problem.
One thing we do have.
Yeah, there's been several complaints.
We have another meeting coming up on the 15th, and I would like them to come back and have Brian and Tyson here, yeah.
Yes.
Come on up, sir. Well, again, I guess my personal opinion is, is that if we're having another meeting on the 15th, that's another two weeks, things like that. So now, I guess I'm looking at it this way, is that now these people have to wait at least another two weeks to hear some answers or things like that. I wrote, made a note here. I was just curious if we could set up, and council doesn't have to be involved, but set up a meeting with the, with the people involved and with Tyson and Brian and have it here over in the chamber or something like that where everybody can kind of get together in the next couple of days to, so we can give them an update on what's, what's going on. I don't know.
That can happen, too.
Well, it sounds like Brian's already aware of it.
Well, I know, but we don't know that. Yeah, but I mean, I'm just saying, right now you're hearing, you know, some things going on there that I think everybody needs to be on the same page. Hear the same thing from one or two people.
Because I want to know whether it's water, whether it's sewer, whether it's a combination of both, and what this is that they're going to do.
Man, I'm not sure what.
I don't know, you know, we don't know if they've gone in with the camera or not to see where the problems are, so.
Well, it sounds like they have, yeah.
Well, at least they did the jetting, yeah. Sir!
Thank you. This is true, Tommy. We need just to get this on the dock and then discuss that later on. But the problem on my side of the street.
Will you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dale Taylor, 108 Leglita.
Thank you.
Now, I'm on the opposite side of the street of Maggie and Nikki, just right straight across the street. Now, my issue is, it's been three years, and yes, I have talked to the city engineer last year, and he thinks, he said, "Promise me things would get changed." Well, nothing's been changed yet, but my concern is, my problem is, 108 Leglita, which is right next to me, put in an ever-dry system, which I have one also, put in an ever-dry system, and they put a system to the front yard, and the front yard tapers like this.
Towards the curb.
To the curb, yes. So out there in the center of that yard, there's an apparatus buried in there, probably about six feet deep, that collects water. Now, it cannot rain for a month, month and a half, and it will still pump water. Now, most of you people know that's why this place is called Fountain City. There's a reason for that.
That's right.
And I have the same problem under my house. That's why I got an ever-dry system also. But I don't have the issue with my ever-dry system, and I don't know why the system they put in there next door is, is a new system, and I'm not familiar with it, but they should have never went to the front yard. They should have went to the back. But anyhow, the problem is, that water will lay there, and I just talked to several people on the street department last week, and they guaranteed me that they know that there's water laying underneath that street all the time, under the street.
Under?
Now, at the end of my driveway, because my driveway goes downhill, the water lays there all the time, and when that water lays there, and it don't have to rain for maybe a month or so, and that water will turn algae green, mosquitoes, stink, smell, and when I back in or drive in, I track that to my concrete driveway. Now, the worst part about that is, I have no problem with it because I'm gone six months out of the year. I go south. But my neighbor says that's like an ice pond because that water's always out there, and it gets solid ice. And people, the people that, at that time, last year, there was a renter in there next door, and she couldn't get out of her driveway because of that ice, and also the next one down the street, I think it's 112, she had the same problem because that, that water runs down that street, and it just, it's just solid ice. So mine is not sewage. Mine is just a water problem. And my concern is the freezing of thalls. I look for my last section of my concrete, which is on an angle, it's going to start cracking if we're giving away. And that's been doing that for three years now, so that's my concern.
When you talked a year ago to Brian.
Yeah.
About this situation.
Yeah.
I mean, did he at that point say?
Brian?
A solution for that?
Yeah.
Or what they could do or anything?
Brian was guessing at the time because Brian told me that he wasn't 100 percent sure, but he would check into it, that somewhere down through that side of the street, there's no tile system. He feels it broke down.
Right.
Because the water, even though that yard next to me is saturated with water, it's getting to the street and it's not getting to the tile.
So it should get away by the.
Now, he says, he thinks there's a tile in there. He wasn't 100 percent sure, and he said he was going to check in it. Well, I don't know if he ever did or not.
Gotcha, okay. So that's, that's another issue.
And the fellow comes around and checks the water meters, and the winner, he goes bananas because I'm not there in the winter. I think one winter I was there, and he goes out, takes that iron lid off there.
It's full.
It's solid ice, though. He can't get.
Well, icy.
Yeah, because it's, it's just full of water all the time, solid ice. He probably go down there a couple of feet before he get to wherever he wants to read or whatever he's doing.
But you don't have any sanitary problem. Yours is more.
I don't have sanitary, no.
But it's storm-washed.
The reason why I don't have sanitary, don't take the first house on the corner on my side. That first house on the corner is hooked in the same sewage they're hooked into. My house on down to the end of that old creek or what it was called, that's all new sewage line.
So you're hooked in a different.
I'm hooked to a new one.
Is that out front or in back?
Back, out back.
In the back, along that warehouse.
Right, because.
But yours are in front.
Right, but hers, hers is in the front, and the, and the house on the corner of me is in, is tied in the old system. Now, two years ago, I think it was two years ago, maybe it was one year, when they tore up that whole corner of Leglita Court, I mean, I was watching them. I'm thinking, man, because they put in some big, big drain tiles. I thought, what are they doing? And I've been there 33 years, and the people that used to live there never had a sewage problem in that basement, never. I'm thinking, well, that's really weird. Now Chris has got it all of a sudden, but it's right after they, whatever they did on that corner, because they had that tore up for about a month or longer. They put some big tile in there, and Chris had sewage ever since then.
Is that when they were working on the street?
No, it's way before the street.
Even before the high.
Way before the street.
Yeah, this is one on down.
I'd say at least two years ago, maybe.
You're thinking 20 street.
Chris has said it's likely knocked 35 times every hour.
Yeah, he's had sewage problems several times, but ever since they changed that corner, whatever they did on High Street, it was on High Street in the corner of Leglita on the west side, right on, he's had sewage problems ever since, so I don't know what they did.
And he ain't got help?
No idea what they did. But no, mine's just, mine's just water.
Are you people available during the day if we'd have a, if we'd have you come up and talk to the engineer and have a meeting with Tyson and?
I'll make it happen.
We'll make it happen?
I'm retired, but I can.
Yeah. I don't know their schedule right now, but as I said, our, our next meeting would be the 15th, and, and nothing can happen real quick, but at least you.
Right.
Get some answers and find out what's going on if we can get him.
I, I think there's something coming up because I just talked to some fellows there today. I realized they just on trash pickup, but talked to Tom and Tim, and they said, "It's on the list." I said, "We'll move it up." So I don't know what, what's on the list, but I told them to move it up.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And you know, that, that stuff takes bid and time to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Put out the bid and go through all the rigmarole now, but at least you get some answers.
We gotta get, we gotta get going on that.
Right.
I don't like that at all.
Okay, thank you for.
But I will, I will contact them, both of them tomorrow. If we get a number or something we can call and.
Do you want them to call you Maggie? Maggie call you?
No.
Call you?
Yeah.
Maybe after the meeting, come up and talk to the mayor?
We'll get numbers, write something down so we can get you.
Okay. All right. Now, Mayor, take over.
You have on your tables tonight a picture of Al Horne, and I might say that Donna and I had the opportunity to go to Columbus last week where Al was.
You got it.
Have a picture to show and a book to show back and forth. And we had the opportunity to go to Columbus, receive word that Al was going to be inducted into the Ohio Citizen Senior Hall of Fame. And Donna and I had that opportunity on May 28th to go down to see this, and we got to meet various folks down there, and there were three major themes that since 1977, more than 400 individuals have been inducted into the Hall of Fame, and it's, it's almost, the common theme throughout was service without pay for your community and what you've set up. And I know we have our own senior citizens award here that Angie got last week and Dick Reed got before, and there's always a common theme that the, that goes through this, a service for the community and, and things that's set up. And anyhow, Al was, was inducted for his leadership to the Bryan Area Foundation, various other things, and you can see in the book that's, that's when Al started here, and a book was presented. Now, one nice thing about that, and I don't know that Al thought it was nice or not, but Earl Bruce, the former Buckeye coach, was also inducted into the Hall of Fame, and they had a band there that played all the time, all the Ohio State old songs and everything like that, and all the senior citizens that are pumping their best and things of that nature, which I thought was nice. And then my, my wife has made a picture album for you, Al, that she took pictures of everybody down there, and I had the opportunity to go into the Senate office and brought Cliff Hight out and had introduced, of course, Al knew Cliff from before, and I happened to have hired Cliff as football coach here at Bryan, and he had a bunch of footballs in there, and I asked him, "Are those footballs inflated or deflated along that line?" But anyhow, he came out and greeted Al, and his daughter Jennifer and everything was there. And then one of the folks here that's, that's in this picture that we have was the drum major, and he asked me, he says, "Do you remember when I was drum major for the Ohio State Band?" And I said, "Well, when were you drum major?" And he said, "In 1944." I said, "I was two years old." I said, "I don't quite remember that," but Al probably knows who it is in the picture and so forth along that line. And we got to meet the director of the Ohio Senior Citizens under Kasich's administration and so forth. So it was held at the atrium at the, at the Capitol, and it was just a real nice experience for, for Al and his family. So Al, if you come up, I got a little proclamation. I want to present you these pictures that Donna took here and the different things to share. And as I say, Dick, Angie Screeter won the local one here, and I was going to have Angie here tonight along with Dick. All these people, if you, if you look, they have a common theme. They've done a lot of things to move the city forward, and they've done it without pay for a lot of these things, and it's really appreciated. That's a book that Donna has. I don't, we had a pen sitting for, we'll give you another one.
Okay.
But I had, whereas in 1922, Albert H. Horn was born into this world, and whereas in 1922, the world was a much different place, Warren G. Harding was president, Alexander Graham Bell died that year, and the Lincoln Memorial was dedicated. Al Horne, the resident of the city of Bryan for the past 40, 70 years, has been a vital part of the city of Bryan. Al has held various positions at the Wesley United Methodist Church, Community Hospital Wellness Center Board, where the central tower is named the Albert H. Horn Junior Tower, the Bryan Area Foundation, Bryan Rotary Club, the Bryan City Schools, Athletic Booster, and the YWCA, to just name a few. The Bryan Times had quite an article on Al earlier. Al was a retired IRS agent, was recently re-elected, and is currently serving as a member of the Bryan Board of Public Affairs. Today, that's, I was going to present this in Columbus because there's too much going on. Today, May 28th, 2015, we celebrate Al's induction in the 2015 Ohio Citizens Hall of Fame Atrium at the Ohio State House. I therefore acknowledge Chief Johnson, Mayor of the city of Bryan, and on behalf of the city of Bryan, congratulate Al and all the work he's done for us.
Thank you very much. It's team effort, that's all. It was, I was one of them, but there was a lot of other people involved in team effort. And Jack, I remember when you guys went down to Marsh Foundation to get the information on the.
In Van.
I arranged it for the foundation. In those days, the approval was not Cincinnati where they got the problem. It was Cleveland, but they wiped out Al. And I've always been, we should leave the world better for the people, and I still say health care is very important for all the people. And truthfully, that was a key. The city of, when I went on the board at the hospital, it was a sinking ship, bad shape, and in fact, we had to go to industry to get money to keep afloat. And then we met secretly, we weren't supposed to, but we met because there's a difference in the board opinion, and we hired through Grant Brown, Jim Hutton, Rusty, and it turned around. And we lost three good doctors because we weren't improving, but when we put up the new facility for four and a half million, we couldn't borrow money. But we was able to get it through Delbert Latta. He negotiated somebody in Washington where we got contacts, and, but we all had to sign a note ourself. And I'll never forget the time that we were signing over at Rusty's house. My wife said, "Al, you don't make that kind of money." And I said, "Well, I have faith in Rusty." They didn't put this in the paper, but Jim Hutton spoke up and says, "If she sinks, I'll get us all in bankruptcy free." Jim was a sharp attorney, but thank you for it. But it took a lot of people working together. And even the, one of the other key things is, we went over backwards to merge Mount Fielder. Mount Fielder was losing money, and there was, there's factions between these two communities. And not being a native of any of them, but from outsider, I kind of worked things out. There was a, where they said, "We should have more members on the board from Bryan." I said, "No, should be equal." It became equal. And I was president of the board at that time, and I said to Rusty, I said, "One of the things that'll make this smoother is Mr. Smith was president of the hospital board up in Mount Fielder." I said, "I'll just step down and let him take over," which we did, and went smoothly through. It's, you got to learn to negotiate. You learn to negotiate. Well, again, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else out there needs to, would like to address a hearing none, then we'll move on to item number three. An ordinance, please, number and read, Lori.
Ordinance number 16, 2015. An ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending June 30th, 2015. This is a transfer request for $400,000 from the 1% income tax fund to the 101 General Fund for general spending purposes. A transfer of $100,000 from the 1% income tax fund to the 203 Motor Vehicle Street Department Fund for general spending purposes. A transfer of 10% income tax fund of $250,000 to the. A transfer of 1/2% income tax fund of $250,000 to the Capital Improvement Fund. A transfer of $50,000 from the 1/2% income tax fund to the 505 Sewer Drain Maintenance Fund. A transfer of $200,000 from the 1/2% income tax fund to the Police and Fire Building Debt Retirement Fund, and a transfer of $200,000 from the Fire Department Fund to the Police and Fire Building Debt Retirement Fund. Total amount of transfers requested, 1,200,000.
I'm going to suspend. I don't have any questions on that. I'll second that.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes. Number four on the agenda is another ordinance, please number and read.
Ordinance number 17, 2015, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2015, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriations request for $215,000 for the CDVG revolving loan fund for a loan. An appropriation request for the probation grant for 2016 for $92,740. Total amount of appropriation requested, $307,740.
There are no questions, I'll make a motion to suspend.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes. Next on the agenda, number five is a resolution, please number and read.
Resolution number 10, 2015, a resolution providing for an inter-fund cash advance. This is a request for $15,000 to be advanced from the 1% income tax fund to the probation grant fund for fiscal year 2016. The state won't release money until July 1st, but the grant starts July 1st, so we need to advance money, and so that the probation department can hit payroll and a few things. This should be reimbursed no later than the end of August.
That's kind of an in-and-out thing we do every year.
Each year we have to do this.
What you wish us, gentlemen?
I'm going to suspend. I'll second it.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes. Number six on the agenda is employee status change for the street department. Mayor, are you handling that?
Yeah, that's basically Jose Vasquez. We had hired him earlier and had an earlier date for his start of 5/26/15, but he really did not start till April 7th of 2015 was the effective date. And at the time, the CDL that he had was for air brakes, and we needed it for the brakes that would run the garbage truck, so we had to get that changed, and the start and pay would've been 1050 for that, and with the CDL, the correct CDL was 1150. So this is just a matter of recommending Jose Vasquez be paid that amount for his CDL, and he'll be on one-year probation, and he passed all his physical background and so forth, and he's got his air brakes now completed, so we're all set to go with that. So, it's just a correction of an earlier one and getting everything in line where we go. He replaced Chris Culler, who left, or Chris Cullis, who left that position at the street department.
Make a motion, we accept the recommendation.
I'll second.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes. Okay. Next on the agenda, we'll be going into executive session after a short recess, but before we do, we'd like to go around the room and see if any of our supervisors have anything they want to add. Bruce?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mike?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, I guess we're down to Tommy then.
Nothing other than congratulations to Al for, you know, his service to the city of Bryan and its citizens. Very, very nice. Yep. That's it.
Okay.
Nothing to add to that.
Dick?
Nothing to add to it.
Dick?
Yeah, though.
Okay. Good neighbor. The only thing I want to say is, in the last two weeks, I've had issues and, with health issues, and I had the honor, privilege, or, at least I was in the hospital. Wonderful hospital, Bryan Hospital, this hospital up here, I just want to toot Al's horn trumpet a little bit, that I just can't believe that there's people that still want to go to the cities to get things done, when we have such wonderful, wonderful facilities and the personnel there and everything. I'm coming along just fine because of that. And if we can just get some good doctors, like Dr. Houndsworth who worked on me, if we could get him to stay here, it'd be wonderful. But anyhow, Al, your efforts are not in vain, I'll tell you that right now. But thank you to, from the city of Bryan for the wonderful facility. Okay, Mayor?
You have...
Well, first, maybe I better ask Lori.
I just want to express my thanks and appreciation to Mr. Horn for his service.
Okay.
Also, speaking of Lori and the class, we want to congratulate all the seniors from Bryan that graduated on Sunday. I know Lori had a couple we're proud of, as everyone would be of their sons or daughters that did graduate, so that is a congratulations to them. You have on your table, it came from the Health Commissioner, some healthcare services that's gonna be offered at the fairgrounds on August 8th and 9th, that's a handout there. I might say that our Bryan Industrial Park Committee is working, we probably have one more meeting yet. They're setting guidelines for our new park, it's Bryan Industrial Park North, four 20-acre plots, hopefully we'll get some new industry out there. The sewer lines are about out of that area right now, just about complete, so we're working hard with that. And the Best One Tire, that complete, that was settled last Friday, so that's closed, so that is gonna relocate out there on that corner. So, things are moving along that way, and we've had a couple hits already on that park before we ever get it up and going, so we hope that, working with Toledo and RGP Board and the Regional Growth Partnership, that we're gonna get some things going out there and get some new things going. You have a new restaurant that's coming in uptown, restaurant that's replacing the Moore's Restaurant, so that's another good thing there, along that line. So, a few things moving right now, we start to see maybe a light at the end of the tunnel and get some more jobs. Unemployment is lowest it's been for a long time, and it still could be better, and that's what we're working on. A lot of people are hiring, you see hiring signs and so forth indoors and windows, so that's good. And then finally, I have to know from Dan's standpoint, June 20th Parade at 5:00, who's going to ride, or who wants to ride in the parade? If you can give me that, we have to register with the chamber, and if you can decide what cars you're gonna drive, or who's gonna ride, I have the placards and everything from past years, so if you decide you want to be in the parade, we gotta get that in soon to Dan, so the parade list is being made as we speak. So that's June 20th. Anyone want to make a commitment at this time, or you want to wait and let me know?
No, I will. I'll make a commitment with my car. If somebody wants to ride with me, they can.
I'll have my own car, too.
Dick Reed? And car?
Am I right with you? I'm thinking I might be here for once. I've changed some schedules around, so I might be able to...
Okay. But you will ride with...
Yeah, Keith and I will butt together.
How about you, Rick Hoopie?
Yeah, I'm planning on being here.
Rick? How about you, Tommy?
I don't want to make a commitment yet.
Not yet?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Just let me know, we can always get in and so forth, and let Dan know what's going, what we're doing there, so. I think other than that, that's all I have at this point.
Okay, then, at this time, we'll take a short recess before we go into executive session. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Feel free to come anytime.